How are you tonight?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 17th, 2017 Wakegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Ziegler.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Alderman Velco.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Please stand for invocation and pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you again for another City Council meeting. We thank you for this beautiful weather. We thank you for nice Easter Sunday that we enjoyed with our family. We thank you for this mayor. We thank you for this council. We thank you for Wakegan. We ask your blessing to continue to be up on in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you. There are no mayor's comments. Minutes. Item A approved. Motion to approve the regular minutes of April 3rd, 2017. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Ziegler. All's in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item B, motion to approve the special council meeting minutes from April 6th, 2017. Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Villalobos. All's in favor? Aye. Item three, resolutions, proclamations, presentation, appointments. Wakegan Main Street, Art Cobb, please.
Good evening, Mayor Motley, council members, and audience. Tonight I have two talking points to share with you. First one, April 22nd, first cleanup of the season on the Amsteads Highway. Tax season is over and it's time to beautify Wakegan. Please join M.H. Wozniak, CPA, and Wakegan Main Street in their goal to clean up our town. The coordinated effort begins at 9:00 a.m. at the North Shore Printing Parking Lot, Printer's Parking Lot at 535 South Sheridan Road. Please wear long pants, a long-sleeved shirt, and closed-toed shoes for protection against scrapes, bugs, and ticks. If you have any questions, please contact Marty Wozniak at (630) 878-7950, or the Wakegan Main Street office at (847) 623-6650. And finally, Mayor Motley, this is addressed to you personally. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Wakegan Main Street, I would personally like to thank you for your support of Wakegan Main Street. Best of luck to you in your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna be a greeter at Walmart.[225.01][225.01](Laughter). Resolutions for Jerry Cook. You know, it's really been my pleasure to know Jerry. I started taking karate back in 1975, and so did he. And he's a seventh-degree black belt, and I'm not.[241.34][241.34](Laughter). Jerry, read the resolution, please. Jerry? Jerry Cook? Step up, please.
Whereas Gerald "Jerry" Cook was born in Wakegan, Illinois, and graduated from Wakegan Township, Wakegan High School.
Face the camera.
Whereas Jerry began his 50-year-long career in martial arts here in Wakegan, started at the age of 14 as a karate student of Kurt Dorsey. And whereas Jerry is a seven-time kickboxing champion and has an eight-degree belt in Taekwondo, a six-degree belt in Hokkaido, and also holds black belts in Gashin, Do, Karate, and Judo. And whereas Jerry has won numerous worldwide competitions in martial arts, including the USA title and world title in Taekwondo as a lightweight and as a middleweight. And whereas Jerry opened Jerry Cook's Taekwondo in Wakegan in 1981, which he operated until he sold it and retired from the sport in 2015. Whereas Jerry has coached more than 300 black belts who have won 98 USA titles and three world titles, including Olympian Juan Moreno. And whereas Jerry currently teaches Tai Chi and Muay Thai for the Wakegan District in the Wakegan Fieldhouse. And whereas Jerry was recently inducted in Illinois Martial Arts Hall of Fame at a ceremony taking place on April 1st. And now therefore it be resolved that the Mayor Motley and mayors of the City Council Illinois do hereby recognize Jerry Cook for his distinguished service and dedication to Wakegan and to many thousands of students that he helped form a lasting sense of responsibility and confidence. Be it further resolved that a suitable involves copy of this resolution by the mayor and the city clerk be presented to him at the City Council meeting, 17th day of April.
Congratulations, Jerry.[361.62][361.62](Applause). Do you notice that it said he won a lightweight title? Watch it, watch it.
Well, yeah, I was born and raised in Wakegan. I started training when I was 14 years old. Larry Tempest called me a wimp once because I wouldn't go into wrestling.[412.12][412.12](Laughter). That's okay, Larry. But I, he was kind enough, him and Mayor Hyde, to get me inducted into the Wakegan Sports Hall of Fame, which was a lot of fun that night. And just on April 1st, I was elected into the Illinois Martial Arts Hall of Fame. And as I was sitting there with David Motley, looking at the 18 people that were inducted, I saw Juan Moreno, who was my two-time silver medal Olympic champion that I coached. He won in '88 in Korea and '92 in Barcelona. And that was a good trip for him and I. And I saw his name, and I'm going, well, wait, he's in Miami? But his sister Melissa was getting married in Lake Geneva that weekend. And all of a sudden, he's waving at me from across the banquet hall. And he joined us that night. It was a surprise. We had a lot of fun. Juan represented Zion, and I represented Wakegan. And there was 400 people in attendance, and there was a lot of people there. I used to fight in the ring. We had a lot of stories. But it's been a good ride. And I, you know, I started out here in Wakegan, went to college and did train Muay Thai Kickboxing at University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee. And then from there, I ventured into Chicago and met a Korean guy who is still my best friend today, who got me into Taekwondo, and he's back in South Korea now. So it's been a good ride, and I've turned out over 300 black belts, and it's been fun. Something I never thought that would end up being like this when I first started. All I wanted to do is get my black belt because I was getting beat up all the time in Wakegan.[506.53][506.53](Laughter). So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jerry.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.[512.34][512.34](Applause). The next is a resolution for National Donate Life Month. Read the resolution, please.
National Donate Life Month, April 2017. Whereas each and every day, Americans sustain the miracle of life by donating the organs and tissues to others in need. And whereas during National Donate Life Month in April, we honor the living and deceased honors who gave us others who could live. And we celebrate the remarkable achievements of our healthcare and science professionals who perform transplants and create techniques to make the gift of life possible. And whereas we also continue our efforts to raise awareness of the life-saving potential Americans have as donors because only 54% of the U.S. adult population is registered. And whereas additional donors are urgently needed because more than 118,000 people are currently waiting for organ transplants, and thousands of our family members in front, 8,000 per year, 25 people per year, also 1% per hour die while they are waiting for organs. And now therefore it be resolved that the Mayor, Wayne Motley, and the Wakegan City Council do hereby proclaim April 2017 its National Donate Life Month in Wakegan, Illinois. We call upon healthcare professionals, volunteers, educators, government agencies, faith-based and community groups, and private organizations, and citizens to help raise awareness of the urgent need for organ and tissue donors throughout our nation. We urge everyone to go to donatelife.net to learn more about organ donation and to register your decision to save and heal lives by being a donor at your local driver's license facility. At a registerme.org or tell your family about your desire to give a gift of life.
Thank you. Noel, did you need that? Okay, thank you. Next is Public Works Committee. Alderman Newsome, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to execute an amended copy of the intergovernmental agreement between the County of Lake and the City of Wakegan. And this is to transfer of Lewis Avenue from Sunset Avenue to York House Road. This is the acceptance of the sidewalk on the west side of Lewis from Blanchard to Ballantyne after they took down the overpass. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to enter into the attached right-of-entry agreement for the work on the south end of the beach, and this is for the repairs to the pier. And this is for pedestrian, we did do an amended amendment to this to include pedestrian access, including ADA accessibility. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item C, motion to authorize a payment to Metro AR, MISC 32974, Collection Center Drive, Chicago, Illinois, 60693-0329, in the amount of $44,305 for invoice number 003397, project number K52530, for Wakegan Metro Station renovations for installation of a fence. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Because there's no item line attached to it, I'm abstaining my vote.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item D, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to reject all bids and rebid for the custodial contract for City Hall, Public Works, and the Police Department. There was a misunderstanding in the scope of services from the pre-bid meeting. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Your Honor, I'm going to hold that over.
What'd he say? You want to hold that over?
Yes, sir.
Okay, held over by Alderman Cunningham.
All right. Item E, motion to authorize appropriate city officials to award the Belvidere Road Water May Replacement Project to Caponella &amp; Sons Incorporated of Wasworth, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $215,735. Funds for this contract are available in line item 555-916027043. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
And that's all, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Newsome. Special Public Safety Committee meeting. Alderman Tempest, please.
Motion to authorize city officials to accept the pay-repair invoice R04100784301 of $22,085.15 from Interstate Power Systems for the installation of a new engine block for the airport aircraft rescue crash truck. Payment for the installation of this new crash truck engine will be paid from item 1301922457. I will so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Next is the Finance Committee meeting. Alderman Cunningham, please.
Oh, yeah, yes. Finance Committee meeting. Most approve a five-year contract with Sickage LLP for a contract amount in the amount of $359,840 as follows. $68,430 for fiscal year 2017, $69,800 fiscal year 2018, $71,570 for fiscal year 2019, $73,770 for fiscal year 2020, and $76,270 for fiscal year 2021. Pricing assumes one major grant program per year subject to a single audit requirement. Funding split 85,000 general fund, I'm sorry, 85% general fund, 10% water fund, and 5% parking, parking fund. And that's from line item 595-45952476. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Taylor. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, motion to approve change order to reduce the contract order to Professional Meter Incorporated by $34,385 and approve a new contract with United Systems and Software for an amount of $34,385, $34,385 to complete the computer program associated with the automated meter readings AMR program, funding from budget line items 555-916027693. An iso move.
Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Taylor. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Next item, old business. Item A, motion to accept a letter of intent to purchase certain city-owned real estate and to authorize proper city officials to execute the letter of intent with the listed agency. This was held over by Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Ziegler, did you have something to say?
I'd like to make a motion to hold it over.
You just want to hold it over?
Yeah.
Held over by Alderman Ziegler. Next item, reports and communications, or is none. New business. Item A, approval of payroll dated April 14th, 2017, in the amount of $1,482,439.87. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Taylor. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, approval of civil service payroll dated April 14th, 2017, in the amount of $4,750. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Taylor. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item D, approval of IAAF clothing allowance dated April 7th, 2017, in the amount of Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Taylor. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item F, approval to accept and place on file the treasurer's monthly report for March 7th, March 2017. Motion by Alderman Ziegler, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item 10, ordinance as a resolution. Item A, ordinance amending section 21120, parking prohibited at all times on specific streets by adding once a court entire cul-de-sac. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Villalobos. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Item B, ordinance, adopt an ordinance extending the moratorium on approvals for development on the River Road corridor of the City of Wakegan for a period of six months through and including November 18th, 2017. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Villalobos. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Ziegler.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Audience time.
David? Could you? No. Jamie O'Meara.
We have an area.
We're going to be using the phone today because we don't have a timer.
Oh, that's fine. I won't speak for more than three minutes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jamie O'Meara, 1318 Chatham Street. I've spoken on this matter before, but one of the items in today's agenda brings it up again, from Alderman Cunningham's Finance Committee meeting, spending $359,840 on future grants. And unfortunately, because I, and I'm sure many people here, are not able to attend the committee meetings, we don't know what that money is for. So again, I ask that the committee chairs give a brief description of what you're spending our money on. And I would hope that tonight, maybe perhaps during Alderman time, Mr. Cunningham, you could just give us a brief summary of what that means. Thank you.
Ralph Peterson.
Aye.
Just wanted to say farewell, Mayor Motley, and I want to say congrats to Sam Cunningham. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Change, right in there, change.
Alderman Cunningham.
That's it? Nobody else speaking in that?
That's it. And why am I starting? I thought, we don't do the, we don't go by the...
No, it's because of the new board docs. There's no way to...
All right. First, I don't know if it may be appropriate that I speak with her about the audit, or you want to do it from the chair's standpoint?
No, go right ahead.
It was an audit. The dollar amount that was spent, the $359,840, that was an audit, a five-year audit, and it was a breakdown of the dollar amount per year. The grant, Tina, help me out, the grant aspects is what we're going to go back and charge. The general fund, 85% of the $385,000. Then it is the water fund, 10% of the $385,000, and 5% of the parking meter. Is that correct, Tina?
Jamie, I wasn't, I didn't quite hear what your question was, Jamie.
What's, with the breakdown of, with the $385,000, it was for the audit, but I broke it down as to where the dollars are going to come from.
Sure. And since we're using board docs now, to give a little shout-out to the Clerk's office, on the Finance Committee agenda that was posted on board docs last week, and then I copied those agendas over, those items to the City Council, you can click, if you go on the public website and you go to our agendas, you can click on the attachments, and it has the proposal and my memo, and also on the detailed agenda. But the, we just ended a seven-year relationship with Baker Tilly. We had a five-year contract with them for 2000, started in 2009, and the City Council did do a one-time, two-year extension of that contract. And at that time, they said, we'll do this two-year extension. When this is done, do another RFP for auditors. So a five-year audit contract's very common. We issued an RFP. We did a joint RFP with the Village of Rome Lake Beach, and the library also participated with us. They're a component unit of the City of Wakegan. We issued the RFP on February 21st. It was posted on our website. It closed on March 21st. We received back eight proposals. And we had a review committee that was two finance staff from Wakegan, one from the library, and two from Rome Lake Beach. We narrowed it down to three groups. And then we did in-person interviews with Finance Chairman Alderman Velco, myself, and then Kevin Boiso, who's the Finance Director from Rome Lake Beach. And based on that analysis and our interviews, then we recommended that Sickage be retained for a five-year period.
Yes, ma'am. The second, for those who do not know, Ms. Andrea Danks, she is the community liaison for North Shore Gas. Condolences goes out to her family and the passing of her mother. So if anyone knows Ms. Danks, get a chance, please let her know that your prayers are with her. Last but not least, we have our, I'm going to read David Motley's note here. Our Scoop to Loop, not Scoop to Loop, scooping.
Scoop.
Scoop, Wakegan is coming. And here is the exact wording. "I've asked Mayor Motley if he would allow some of his staff to work on planning Scoop for 2017, and since this event requires significant amount of planning, coordination, and resources, we both agree that we need to get the ball rolling, or we still have enough time to get it all together. I want everyone to mark their calendars for July 7th and 8th so that you can help us spread the word that Scoop will be back this summer, and look forward to everyone coming out and enjoying, and enjoy this great community event in Wakegan." Is that right, David? That works out well? All right. So Scoop is coming back. And right now, Mayor, thank you. Start that ball rolling. I think our Hall of Famer here tonight is going to be working with David's team to make Scoop one of the greatest events, I think, on the North Shore. That's it. Thank you.
Alderman Ziegler.
No comment.
Alderman Moiseo.
I'd just like to thank Mayor Motley. Sitting in that chair, it doesn't matter who the mayor is, that's an arduous task. And it's even more arduous when you care about the City of Wakegan, that I know all the mayors have cared about. It's a 24-hour, 365-day job. I've always said maybe the only tougher job is Chief of Police because his phone always rings first when something goes sideways. But I just want to thank the mayor for all his hard work and look forward to working with the new administration. Thank you.
Alderman Villalobos.
Yes.
Yes, um, excuse me, everyone, sorry, I'm getting over a little sickness. First, I'd like to mention, um, the Art Walk that we just had this past weekend. Um, it was a partnership, I believe, with Wax. There was a lot of dogs. People with their dogs were out in downtown Waukegan enjoying our scenery here. Um, it was good to see all those people. I brought some friends actually from out of town, uh, that live in Schaumburg, and they said they wish their community did something like this. So, oftentimes, me personally, I live in the bubble of Waukegan, and I forget sometimes that we, we, I mean, I know we do amazing things here, but to hear it from others who actually have a different perspective, it's, it just reassures that we're on the right path for what, the things that we do for our community. So, um, kudos to David Motley and all the people that put together Art, Art, Art Walk. Um, I look forward to next month. There's going to be themed with, thematic with, uh, Star Wars going on, so you might see some cosplay people out there. It's going to be fun. Uh, the warm months are right, right approaching us, so we'll get a lot more, uh, participants in our Art Walk. Uh, I was able to ride the trolley that we offer now. And also, the, the people I brought, uh, the husband is actually, he suffered from a stroke, so he has to use a walker, so his mobility is very limited. So, he really appreciated the trolley system, too, um, and made mention of that. Um, second, I'd like to, again, it's that time of the year now, I'll be doing a lot more trash pickups. Um, I'm doing a partnership with the Park, Port District, is doing their first, uh, Earth Day Trash Pick, uh, Harbor Cleanup. It's going to be on Earth Day also, April 20, Saturday, April 22nd. Um, so if you're interested in picking up some trash, you have the AmStuds, and you also have the Harbor to choose from. Uh, the Harbor event's going to be going on from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. Um, there's, um, the staging location's going to be at the parking, parking lot that's at the intersection of Clayton and Harbor Place, which is right across the street from the yacht, the Waukegan Yacht Club. Um, so if you're interested in coming to that, come along, it'd be a good time. Uh, we're looking to tackle a lot of the Harbor, actually, for this one. Um, the other trash pickup that I have scheduled, that's kind of, that's community-based, is actually through a young man named Austin Cantu. He's a freshman at Waukegan High School. He's taken upon himself to, um, kind of spearhead the art park in downtown Waukegan now. So, he's been doing that for about, since last year. He took over some of the just decorativeness and cleanliness of the, of that park, and I'm helping support him. So, we're going to do a trash pickup and kind of beautification of that space on Sunday, April 30th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Um, and also want to note that actually, again, taking, uh, this young man's taken upon himself and his parents are supporting him. So, a lot of the stuff that's been going on actually is done, can come out of their pockets. Um, so me might think about doing him a GoFundMe project for that in the future, but he and I have to discuss that. Again, it's great to see some of our Waukegan youth taking the initiative and taking on some of our, taking that role of responsibility and civic pride that I speak about often. Um, the last thing I want to bring up is, um, I personally have made a commitment to do some fundraising for Safe Place. Um, if anybody's interested in supporting my efforts to fundraise for Safe Place, please go check out my Facebook page. Just type in David Villalobos, Waukegan on Facebook, you'll see my web, you'll see my, my Facebook page. I've been posting on there, um, what I'm trying to do in support of a Safe Place. Um, for those of you who may not know, Safe Place is the only organization in Lake County that helps, uh, that helps individuals get away from domestic violence. And that they are, can also get a lot of government funding and because considering the, our government landscape federally, they're very concerned about their funding being cut drastically. So, they're looking for other outlets to support these individuals, uh, throughout Lake County. So, I don't ask people for money usually, I ask them for their time because that's the most valuable thing that we have in this world. But on certain occasions, I will actually say, okay, I'll start asking for some money. So, this is one of those occasions. So, please, help support me, support a Safe Place. And that's all I have right now. Thank you very much.
Alderman Newsom.
Yes.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor.
I also want to remind people that, um, now that spring is coming, I highly encourage you, it's time to get out, cut your grass, take these nice weekends, clean, clean up your yard a little bit, beautify your property. If you can, get a community block together, whether it be, um, through your H, your homeowners' associations, whether it's a street cleanup, but let's work together on improving house by house so that the whole city looks better. Second of all, I, I just want to thank Mayor Motley again for his years of service, not only as our mayor, but as a city clerk, and probably most importantly, as a police officer. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
That's all.
Uh, motion adjourned by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Seager. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.